Right, we're recording, so hello and welcome to the latest Covid-19 media briefing. It's Friday the 10th of December, and this is a joint briefing by Nottingham City Council, Nottinghamshire County Council and the NHS to give the media an opportunity to get the latest updates on our response to the Covid-19 pandemic. On our panel today, we have Lucy Huber, Director of Public Health in Nottingham, Jonathan Gribbin, Director of Public Health in Nottinghamshire, and Amanda Sullivan, Accountable Officer for the NHS in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. Usual format, please. Our panellists will give an opening update on Covid-19, then we'll open the floor to questions. Raise your hand if you have a question. We'll come to you one at a time. If you could remain on mute with your cameras off until it's your turn to ask a question. And for the purpose of recording, it is really helpful if you tell us who you are and what media you represent, that would be really helpful. So if everyone's happy, I'll hand over first to Amanda and the NHS.
Thank you very much, Steve, and morning. So the NHS continues to operate under extreme pressure and our intensive care units continue to run with higher numbers of patients than before the pandemic. Staff have been working in really highly pressurised environments for nearly two years now, and this has taken its toll on people's wellbeing. The extreme pressure is a combination of three things. Firstly, we continue to have significant numbers of people in hospital who are seriously or critically ill with Covid, and this is starting to rise again. Secondly, we are seeing more people come forward now with winter illnesses and other conditions that have become worse during the pandemic. And thirdly, we are dealing with a backlog of planned operations and other treatments that were deferred in earlier waves, and we're very keen to keep as much of that going as we possibly can. So those three things mean that the NHS is operating under really extreme pressure. And it's really clear that the best thing you can do to keep yourself safe from becoming seriously ill with Covid is to have your vaccines and then boost your immunity with the booster when you are eligible. And this year marks, this week marks the first year since the beginning of the vaccination programme, and we've given over 1.7 million vaccines now. The efforts of staff and volunteers have been remarkable, and they continue to be remarkable as we move into this next phase of the vaccination programme. I'm pleased that we've given over 300,000 booster jabs across more than 50 sites. And if you are over 40, pregnant, over 16, with a health condition that makes you more vulnerable to Covid, or a health and care worker, you can now book your booster two months after your second dose, and you can receive your booster three months after your second dose. So we have brought this forward from six months to get as many people boosted as quickly as possible, and you can book this via 119 or the National Booking website as well. And it's still not too late to get your first and second jab. That is really important to give yourself some protection. And again, really pleased that many new people are now coming forward for first and second jabs and getting some protection. And you can book or you can walk into our large centres if you've not yet had your first or second jab. So with Christmas around the corner, get yourself and your family protected by getting your jab and getting your booster jab. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Give me a hand over next to Lucy Huber from Nottingham City, please.
Hi, good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us this morning. We've just been hearing about the extreme pressures that the NHS locally are under, and that's undoubtedly going to inform some of the decisions that are being made now as we learn more and more about the Omicron virus variant, rather. Since we last met, we've had notification of confirmed cases of Omicron in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. And these are currently very small numbers, but actually those confirmed cases probably belie a higher number of cases in the community that haven't yet been confirmed. At the moment, the response is being led by the UK Health Security Agency, and we thank them for their tremendous work that they've done in terms of helping us with contact tracing and giving advice and support and making sure that everybody is aware of their responsibilities. We've got lots to learn about Omicron, but there are some things that we do already know about it. It's much more transmittable than the Delta variant, and that means that it can be very easily passed on between people. At the moment, we're seeing it predominantly in younger age people, and they're experiencing relatively mild illness. We don't know the effects when it moves into our older populations, but regardless of that, the more cases we have, the more chance there are of people becoming seriously ill, and that will place yet more pressure on our NHS. And that's part of the reason why we're taking some of the actions that we are to try and delay the spread of Omicron and coronavirus generally. The other thing that we know about Omicron is the importance of vaccination. The early findings show that immunity acquired through infection isn't good at protecting people from picking up Omicron. What is known is that the more chances your body has of developing antibodies, the stronger the response. So people who've had infection and then doses of the vaccine, or have had two or three doses of the vaccine, are much more protected against Omicron than somebody who has just had a previous infection. Really, really important that you get your vaccine, first or second dose if you haven't, and it is never too late. Please come, you know, come to one of our vaccination sites or book online if you haven't yet had your vaccine. If you're due your booster, and we've just been hearing brilliant news that it's been brought forward to three months from your second dose, if you're eligible for your vaccine, book online, book your booster and get yourself vaccinated. It will protect you from Covid generally, but clearly also from Omicron. There are other things that we can do to help delay the spread of coronavirus and particularly Omicron. And we've recently had the announcements nationally about the increase in the expectation of people to wear face coverings in more settings, including cinemas and theatres. But I would ask our population to think about wearing them in as many ways as they can when they are in indoor or crowded spaces. Don't just think about the places where you're told you have to wear it. Think about the places where it feels right to wear it. If you're outdoors but in a crowd, wear your face covering. The more of us that do that, the more protection there is for all of us. We've also had the announcements about working from home, where people possibly can, and that's about reducing the opportunity for spread. And the other things that we can do as well as vaccination is to get tested. If you're going out, if you're meeting friends or family, take a lateral flow test before you go. If you've got symptoms, no matter how mild, if you've got something which is making you feel a bit groggy, if you've got a slight cough, go and get one of the PCR tests. That's one of the tests that has to be sent off to a lab. That's the best test to use if you might have symptoms. And we've really seen in Nottingham City an increase over the last couple of weeks of people taking up that opportunity to have a PCR test, and we thank them very much for doing so. Their actions are helping to keep us all safe. In Nottingham City, we're seeing an increase in case rates. We're currently at 447 cases per 100,000. That's an increase of 25% in the last week. Our estimates suggest that Omicron doesn't account for that increase, that it is an increase in coronavirus generally. And that's not great as we're moving into the Christmas period. So asking people to take that extra step in order to make sure that we can all see our loved ones over Christmas is really important now for us all to do everything we possibly can do to protect not only ourselves, our family, but those around us as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. And give me a hand over finally to Jonathan Gribbin from Nottingham, Nottinghamshire County Council.
Thank you, Steve, and good morning, everyone. The information and advice that I'm going to give you now, the advice in particular, concerns 2022, but it requires action now, and it's very much on the basis of what we do already know today. So firstly, we must be really clear about the severe and even extreme pressures that our local NHS and care system are under already. And much of that, as we've heard, is due to winter pressures in general, dealing with a backlog of really priority work that's built up. But of course, it also arises from cases of Covid arising largely from the Delta variant. And all of that means that the local NHS really has no headroom, no spare capacity for dealing with further pressures. The second thing I want to underline is that Omicron spreads much more easily than the Delta variant. And we have in Nottinghamshire already evidence of community transmission that is spread between people where there's no travel history. And it means nationally that we're observing now a doubling of cases of the Omicron variants every two to three days, so it's spreading very fast. Thirdly, I want to emphasise that we know already, and we know from as far back as last calendar year, that there is a time lag that we experience between a new wave of infection and the hospitalisations which may unfortunately result from it. And that means that waiting to take action until we see those hospitalisations arise is really leaving things much too late. And to do that in this situation would risk the health of wellbeing, health and wellbeing of people across Nottinghamshire. So whilst it's true that right now we don't know exactly how big this new wave is going to be and how severe it is, there are nevertheless things that we need to do right now and can do which will delay that wave and also reduce its impact. So if you're a contact of someone who may have been infected with Omicron variant, it's already the case that you must self-isolate for 10 days regardless of age, or your vaccination status, or whether you have a negative test. That's the arrangement just at the moment, and that is to stop further spread of what is already proving to be a very transmissible variant. From today, face coverings are required by law in most indoor settings and on public transport. And that's really important because Covid-19 spreads through airborne droplets when we breathe, we talk, we cough or sneeze. And so those face coverings are really important to protect those around us, including in some cases, people who are working on our behalf, driving public transport or taxis and so on, who may not have a choice about where they work. And from next week, December 13th, people who can work from home should do so. And that's really important because Covid-19 spreads fast when people mix together with others, and reducing the contact that we have with other people reduces the spread. And you will also have heard that from December the 15th next week, subject to proceedings in Parliament, certain venues will be required by law to check that everyone aged 18 or over is fully vaccinated, has proof of a negative test or has a valid exemption. And that's really important because, again, it underlines that the vaccine and the booster that's available to people aged over 40 now is central to strengthening our immune defences against Covid-19. So I want to urge you to get your booster jab. It is essential for strengthening our immune defences. There are thousands of appointments now available to people across the East Midlands and in many settings across Nottinghamshire. You can book that online or by phone, and in taking up that offer, you are playing your part in keeping yourself safe, but also in safeguarding our local NHS and our care system as we move through the end of this year and into a new year as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. We'll throw open the briefing now to questions from the floor, from the media. Again, just for the purpose of recording, if you can let us know who you are and what media you represent, that would be really helpful. And the first hand I can see is Hugh Caswell.
Morning, everyone. Hugh Caswell from BBC Nottingham here. On the Omicron variant, Lucy, you spoke about cases, plural, in Nottingham and Nottinghamshire. To be clear, have there just been the two confirmed cases already reported, the one in the city and the one in the county? Or have there been any more? And if so, are you able to say how many? And also, given this latest reported cases, as you said, Jonathan, not related to travel, is it your view then that Omicron is now circulating in the community here in Nottinghamshire?
I think it's really important that we say two things here. One is we've got a very small number of confirmed cases, and we always like when we're talking about very small numbers to not be too specific because it may identify individuals. So very small number of confirmed cases. However, we do have a much larger number of highly probable cases, and that does suggest that there is community transmission. Now, I think it's really important to understand that that's, that at the moment, Omicron is no different than the previous variants that we've had. It's just something new that we need to be able to take in consideration. And so we're taking the delay action because what we want to do is take the time to be able to learn around this and to reduce pressure on the NHS from it. So I wouldn't want to give concern to people that, you know, Omicron is out there and it's terrifying. The answer is Covid itself is incredibly serious. We're seeing, you know, nationally, hundreds of deaths a day from Covid. And therefore, it's, you know, we should all be taking all of the actions we can regardless of variants in order to try and reduce the spread of Covid. Really important right now that everybody does what they can do to try and reduce the transmission in order to try and keep people safe and reduce the pressure on the NHS. So to answer your question directly, Hugh, yes, I believe that we now are seeing some community transmission of Omicron. Jonathan, did you want to come in on that?
Yeah, thanks, Lucy, and thank you, Hugh, for the question. So to set this in its proper context, in Nottinghamshire County, there are more than 600 people every day testing positive for coronavirus, which in any of its variants remains a serious health hazard for us. We have two confirmed cases of the Omicron variant in Nottinghamshire County. But that situation represents something which is growing and will change fast, and we won't be in a position to provide an hour-by-hour commentary on exact numbers as we go forward. And what we have at the moment, yes, is evidence of community transmission in Nottinghamshire. So that is a concern, but it's a concern about which we already know what we can and should do individually and collectively. And that comes back to the messages that we've been passing on already this morning. So at the centre of this, we want to encourage people across Nottinghamshire to make sure that they come forward promptly for their booster jabs, which are available now through thousands of appointments becoming available in multiple different settings across Nottinghamshire. And that is a really important part of strengthening our immune defences. As Lucy described earlier on, the more we can build those defences through first and second dose, and even after we have experienced infection ourselves, the better, and the more that will suppress and delay any wave of further hospitalisations which may arise in 22 as a result of the Omicron variant. So there's plenty that we can do, and on top of that, we need to make sure that we're really prompt about getting the PCR test and isolating if we have even the mildest symptom, which might indicate that we have coronavirus ourselves. And of course, on top of that, as we move into a season where people are gathering together, it's really important we take every opportunity ourselves to protect ourselves, but also those around us. So that means making sure that we're using face coverings in the settings where that's required. It also means if we're mixing with other people that we might want to think very seriously about coming to that gathering, having ensured that we have a negative result to a lateral flow test ourselves, and also thinking about the ventilation and even the distancing that we can do in those settings. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Lucy. Hugh, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, please, yes. Thank you for that, both. On the topic then of the new restrictions coming in, which you've mentioned, there's been a lot of attention this week, of course, on the parties that did or didn't happen in Downing Street last year. There will be, as a result, I'm sure, a lot of people now asking themselves why they should abide by the new restrictions after they've seen people in a position of power, people that we might usually expect to set a good example, seemingly not stick to rules. So quite simply, what do you say to people who might sort of feel that way inclined?
Thank you, Hugh. Who would like to go first with that one?
I'm happy to. So Hugh, it's always nice to receive an invitation to a gathering or a party. And if you were thinking of sending one my direction, I'd thank you for it, but on this occasion, we'd probably have to decline. And what I've found over the last 18 months is that people across Nottinghamshire are well able to use discretion and judgement themselves about what is wise and prudent in the context of a global pandemic and the ongoing serious health hazard that Covid-19 represents. And in many instances, we don't have to wait around for people elsewhere in the country to set us an example. We're able to set the example ourselves and to do the right thing. And I'm confident that people across Nottinghamshire will be well able to do that in this situation too.
Thank you, Jonathan. Lucy, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, just to build on that, that really, Hugh, I think as people are planning for their Christmas, it's a chance for them to think about what's really important to them over this Christmas period. And for me, it's about being able to spend Christmas with my family, who I wasn't able to spend Christmas with last year, and that includes elderly relatives and people who are clinically extremely vulnerable. So I'm going to be taking that as part of my consideration when I think about activities that I'll be doing in the run-up to Christmas. So that's my priority. So rather like Jonathan, I would also not be accepting a kind invitation to a Christmas party right now. There are differences, and there are sensible decisions that people can make. So there is a very big difference between attending a sit-down meal where people are largely seated and you're wearing face coverings beforehand, and I would feel very comfortable, much more comfortable with that than I would in a nightclub-type environment or a crowded party in somebody's house where I would feel very uncomfortable because I couldn't maintain social distancing, ventilation is less good, can't wear a face covering, can't be assured that the other guests are wearing, have had lateral flow tests beforehand. So I think, you know, you have to make a sensible decision for what it is that is important to you right now. But I would echo Jonathan, our population have shown an enormous amount of common sense, and that I'm sure that they will make wise and sensible decisions over the next few weeks.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you, Jonathan. Hugh, thanks for the questions.
Thank you.
Next hand up I can see is Matt Jarom. Hi, Matt.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good, good. Matt from BBC Local Democracy Reporting Service. Hugh kind of answered one of the, you've answered kind of one of the questions that Hugh posed you, but I just would like to ask it again, really. Jonathan, you said that there's two cases at the moment of the new variant within Nottinghamshire. Would it be okay, Lucy, to tell us how many are in the city? I know you're saying small numbers and it's an ever-changing picture, but I think it'd be quite helpful just to get an idea of how many cases there has been. And what did the investigations find at Herman, sorry, Hayman Primary School and the University of Nottingham? And my follow-up question is to Amanda. Could we have some figures on the hospital admissions at the moment and those in intensive care, and whether or not any of the new variants are one of the intensive, or any of the intensive care cases? Thank you very much, all of you.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, so we'll pick up the Omicron question first, and then we'll come to Amanda for the hospital pressures.
So happy to share, Matt, in that the UK Health Security Agency who are leading this, I think have published some figures recently that suggest that there are, or there were, when they published them, nine cases within Nottingham City, that those nine cases are not all connected to a single event. So that does support the idea of there being, you know, people are picking it up from a number of different sources.
Thank you, Lucy. Amanda, can we come to you for the question on the hospital pressures?
Yes, thank you. So in the week running up to the 5th of December, we had 100 admissions to hospital with Covid, and that meant there was 175 people in our hospital beds on the 7th of December. We have had consistently between around 150 and 200 people in our hospital beds, which is a big proportion of hospital beds taken up with, which would normally be occupied by people with other conditions. So that's adding to the pressures. And we had 16 deaths in the week, in the week of the 2nd to the 8th of December, which again is not, that is a sort of typical, you know, number of deaths sadly in our area. So we are seeing, you know, on average, more than one death a day in our area from Covid. It's a daily event that people are dying from Covid. I'm not aware of any Omicron cases in the hospitals, that would be more from a sort of public health side of it, but I'm not aware of any at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Matt, thank you for the questions.
I just, respect to Matt, he, I think he mentioned something about the follow-up work we did in West Bridgford, which I perhaps ought to...
Of course, thank you, Jonathan.
Oh, yeah, I did. Thank you, Jonathan.
Though, yeah, when we, when we were, all of us were together a fortnight ago, I think at that stage, Lucy and I both set out the arrangements that we've got in place as part of our local outbreak management plan, that we remain in close collaboration with colleagues from UK Health Security Agency. And were we to receive a signal that we needed to stand up a public health response that might involve some, for example, targeted testing, that we were ready to do that? And I think within three days or so, we had done that, and that involved in the county some activity in a West Bridgford school. And I'm really pleased to say that that was completed very promptly and very efficiently, largely down to the efforts of the head teacher, the parents, students at that school, as well as our colleagues in the Health Security Agency. So I'm grateful to all of those parties for that. I'm satisfied that all of the follow-up public health actions that needed to be taken in respect to that have been undertaken. And as we've commented on already, you have the latest report from Health Security Agency to refer to yourself. So that's probably as much as there is to say in terms of the activity that we followed up on, it's more than 10 days ago now. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I just reinforce, reinforce that. So Jonathan's absolutely right. We did a fortnight ago tell you that we had good systems, plans and procedures in place, and weren't quite expecting them to put into place the next day. But, you know, it demonstrated just how effective that is and that we were able to move and mobilise as quickly as we were for that.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Lucy. That was worth emphasising. Matt, thank you for the questions. Joe Locker next.
Hi, guys. Yeah, Joe Locker here from the Nottingham Post. Good to see you all again, and I hope you all have a nice Christmas as well, considering this is the last one. So, yeah, that's great. Anyway, on to the question. So I just want to clarify, sorry, once again, so we've got nine cases of Covid in the city and two in the county. Is that correct in saying?
No, we've got far more cases of Covid in the city than nine...
Sorry, Omicron, sorry.
Again, I mean, I'm just going to say it again, that the figures are those figures which are shared by UK HSA, and that they are subject to regular change and updating. But I believe that the last figures published by UK HSA had nine confirmed cases for City. For Omicron.
Lovely. And I suppose the next question then is in terms of, so there's been kind of talk of a Plan C in terms of COVID rules recently. So do you see, you know, from your kind of professional opinion, do you see kind of these additional restrictions coming in and should they come in? Kind of as we head further into the winter months? And on the topic of vaccine passports, how will they work and is it a viable thing? Cheers.
Thank you, Joe. Shall we pick up the Plan C question first and then we'll look at the vaccine passports?
I'm happy to kick off. Joe, thank you for the question and thank you also for your good wishes for Christmas. And I hope you have a good one too. So I'm on Plan B right at the moment. We have clarity, as I said before, about the really severe pressures that our local NHS is under, the lack of headroom they have to take on and accommodate further pressure and demand. We're really clear about the lag there is between the first cases of a new variant, if you like, and any wave that might follow in terms of hospitalisations which might result. And we're also really clear already and have good evidence about just how much more transmissible Omicron is. So there is plenty to focus on now in terms of what we can do, which will be effective in suppressing and delaying that wave which might come in 2022. And I think that's what we need to remain very focused on for now. There are things which the scientists are still working on. And over the next two or three weeks, I'm quite sure that as further information becomes available, we'll be much better placed to think about what if any further arrangements or measures might be required in the period ahead. But for now, I think it's more important that all of us focus on what's needed right now. And that comes back to boosters because they're widely available. There are thousands of appointments. You can get them in multiple settings across Nottinghamshire. It comes back to getting tested and isolating really right away if you have even the mildest of symptoms. If you are going about and mixing with other people and your judgement is that that gathering is the right thing to be involved with, then do make sure that you've got a negative LFT test, particularly if you're going to be mixing with anyone who might be vulnerable at all. I would think ahead to your Christmas and the Christmas you want to enjoy with those around you in a way that is really safe and to think about what you do over the next couple of weeks in the light of that. So I'm very firmly fixed on Plan B for the time being, Joe. But I hope that Plan B for you and for me lands us a really good and safe Christmas with our loved ones.
Thank you, Jonathan. Lucy, do you have anything to add on Plan B?
I don't actually. I thought that was an excellent answer from Jonathan and particularly the sensible consideration at the end that it's for all of us to consider what actions we want to take for the Christmas period that we want to have.
Thank you, Lucy. The next part of Joe's question was around the COVID passports that will be introduced next Wednesday. Maybe you'd like to pick up those?
Are we still, so, you know, obviously this has all been brought in relatively quickly. So we are anticipating receiving further information on how those will work and how they will be applied and enforced over the next few days. They're based on a very sensible principle, which is that before you go out, you should take a lateral flow test, you should make sure that you're vaccinated. So and that's very much in line with the rest of the advice that we've been giving all the way through. So outside of COVID passes, that's something that we would encourage people to be considering, which is the importance of getting vaccinated first or second dose if you haven't, because we know that will make a difference in relation to Omicron. And absolutely your booster when you're eligible for it. And get that booster booked on the NHS website and have a lateral flow test before you are going to visit or meet up with anybody who isn't normally in your household.
Thank you, Lucy. Jonathan, anything to add to that?
Nothing further on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan. Joe, thank you for the questions. Are there any more questions? We have a, we've extended the briefing today to a Nottingham Trent University broadcast journalism student, Marcelo. Marcelo, welcome. Would you like to ask your question, please?
Yeah, sure. Well, first, I'm a journalism student, not a broadcast journalist student. And so, yeah, my name is Marcelo and I'm a third year at Nottingham Trent University. I just wanted to ask, you were saying, talking about the possible community transmission going around in Nottingham and how it's how important it is to get the first dose or the second dose. And most importantly now, because of the new variant, to get the third dose, the booster dose to get those defences up. And I was going to ask, before the third dose, obviously, we also get a second dose. And given that there's a few areas in Nottingham City where vaccination rates, vaccination uptake of the second dose doesn't even reach 50%, like the lowest 3-hour city centre, Trent Bridge, with 48.9, 48.1, sorry. And Bradford and High Street with 42.4% both. So I was just going to ask, now with the new variant, what, will there be new and more steps taken to increase the second dose uptake in low vaccination rates like those mentioned before?
Thank you, Marcelo. Who would like to pick up that? So obviously the need to increase vaccinations, especially in Nottingham City.
Yeah, I can start with that. So absolutely. And this is why we're very strongly encouraging people to come forward for vaccine doses and really welcoming people who may have been reluctant before to come forward for your first and second dose. And we're trying to make it as easy for people to do that as possible by saying you can just walk into one of the main sites. So really strongly encouraging people to take that offer up. In addition to that, we are doing, continuing to do a series of pop-up, you know, vaccine clinics as well. We have been doing that all the way through and we are continuing to do that as we go forward. So it's a combination of, you know, kind of going out into communities and really trying to encourage people to take that up, but also giving people that walk-in facility as well. But really strongly, I just think it's a, you know, really, a really good thing to do, particularly at this time of year as we are heading into winter. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Lucy, did you have anything else to add from Nottingham City?
No, really welcome the question, Marcelo. So thank you for that. And invite all of our media colleagues to try and give some of these messages out around the importance of vaccination, particularly for people, reminding people it's not just about boosters. It is really important if you haven't had your first or second dose, it's never too late. Don't think, you know, the six months have passed, it's too late for me now. It's never too late. And what's really fantastic in our GP practice, in our pharmacies and in our vaccination centres, there are people there who are willing to just have a conversation with you. If you've got questions you want to ask, there are people there who will absolutely be able to support you. The other message that I would give out is the importance that we've been saying around the, the one, one dose of COVID is not really enough to protect you, whether that's through infection or whether that's through vaccination. One isn't going to cut it. Two is better. Three is great. So if we can start people on that journey towards getting people to move through first, second and third or booster dose, then that's fantastic. And that will really help protect, you know, not just the individual, but the people around them as well.
Thank you, Lucy. Marcelo, you're welcome to ask a follow-up question or did that answer everything that you needed?
That was perfect. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you for the question. Are there any other questions from the media? I can't see any more hands, so I just want to pause for five seconds or so just to make sure we haven't missed anything. It's been very comprehensive, so it might be that everything's been answered, but I just want to make sure. Okay, well, if that's everything, I will just wrap up then and say thank you to Lucy, Jonathan and Amanda, as always, for your time here today. Thank you to the media as well for helping to keep everybody informed about COVID-19. And I wish you all a happy Friday and happy Christmas. And we'll see you on the other side. Have a lovely weekend. Take care, everyone.
Happy Christmas, everyone.
Happy Christmas.